...meeting of the Rollinsburg Select Order. I'm in class, we apologize right now. First of all, this is the approval of May 6th. Oh, we had to call Miles. Did you say we're gonna call him?
Yes.
Can you call him when you're...
I can't.
What do you want me to call him? It doesn't matter. Off the, uh... Battery line for the interview.
Under 100 plus, I guess. Under 100.
Yeah, second line.
Uh, speakerphone.
That probably be good, too.
Yes, sorry.
Hello.
Hello, Miles, how are you?
How's John, okay?
All right. So, Miles is joining us this evening by phone. He's a little under the weather this evening, so he's gonna be, uh... Just waiting via phone. So, just called the meeting to order. Uh, first order was the approval of, uh, May 6th minutes. Were there any, um... I read through the list. To me, any additions or subtractions? Edit? Miles?
Nope, nope.
All right, so that by consensus, we will, um, approve them. Community input. Any community input at the moment? I have me I'll do it under this. At, um... Clearly, these are open meetings that are available to the public, and I appreciate the fact that we have, um, videos of the meetings. If we could just start them when the meeting actually starts, but I guess... I don't know which camera was. I have no idea.
This one.
Well, this one was like on like half an hour before, something before the meeting. So, it was like all this banter of like had nothing to do with the meeting, so I... You know, it's sort of like an... It feels like an invasion of people's privacy, but if the meeting hasn't started, they're not doing any official business, just sitting there talking, so... Anyway, if we could just be mindful of that, so...
Maybe you could pause after you call the meeting to order, so I can get up and get to the camera.
Okay, sure. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't know which one it was, but...
I don't know which one it was.
It's blocked or anything.
I haven't happened.
I'll play it to you, it could be completely stupid, but maybe.
You know, five minutes before I will.
Okay. So, just so we're all on the same page, it'd be nice if we... If we could, don't mind doing that. But clearly, if people are... Should be, you know, feel free to...
Do you put yours on YouTube?
The library puts it on a Vimo or Vimeo?
This was YouTube.
YouTube?
Yeah.
Yeah, they put it on YouTube and I put mine on. But I usually start it just before you... Before I sit down when he says, so...
I mean, I don't...
It just needs to not happen.
Yeah, okay. So, we both are all on the same page, that'd be good. All right, thank you. Any other community input before I move on? All right. Department head meetings, George, come on up. Now, we do have a few things right here. You don't have a pad in front of you, so I'm assuming you don't have... You have some, so... All right, so the first thing we have on here is driveway culverts, Sligo Road.
We, uh... I was told that there was a couple... We found a couple other cross culverts actually going Sligo Road. They weren't buried up in the... They weren't being... Working, obviously.
Uh-huh.
As we come down the hill towards the big culvert.
Can you hear, uh, Miles, sorry? Miles?
Yep, I can.
You can't? Okay, go ahead. Sorry, George, sorry.
So, uh... Well, you know, I'm gonna mute place also in between, um, speaking because the dark, it's really dark today.
No worries. I just wanna make sure you can hear, that's all. Okay?
Yep, I can.
Okay. Sorry, George.
So, there's... And I don't know why this was done in the past or whatever, but... Coming down the hill towards the big culvert from Pinch Hill.
Yeah.
Not coming in from Woods Run, but the other way.
Okay.
There's two cross culverts coming down that hill that bring the water from one side of the road to the side of the road that had all the damage, uh, at the culvert. Which, instead of going past the driveway, they went across the road.
Okay.
Which is tomato foolishness.
The wrong way to do this, right?
You know, it should be... The straightier your water goes, the less chances you're gonna have...
Right, right.
Issues. Then beyond that, in between the two houses, there's a basin that was put in apparently, which also crosses the road and dumps at the inbound side of the culvert and not the outbound side of the culvert.
So, it's just like a site, it just, it goes...
Down the hill.
Goes down the hill, dumps into the catch basin. The catch basin dumps back to the other side of the road, not the outfall side, but the...
The infall.
Infall side. And then goes where?
Under the culvert.
Under the, under the road?
Well, it dumps into the cul... Into the ditch and then it goes under the... Into the culvert, the big culvert. Instead of just going down and dropping it, you know?
Yeah.
So, my... They gotta be replaced or we, uh... They gotta be taken out anyway because it rotted.
Right.
So, my thought is, is to go through that first driveway, put a 25-foot culvert there. That will drop into the catch basin. There's no driveway between the catch basin and the...
Right.
Big culvert. And put a second basin at the culvert, so the water that collects on the culvert will have a place to go instead of just sitting on the culvert and then draining down into the outfall.
Okay.
But that has to be brought up with during the permit... I talked to Aaron today, he said it's not something you wanna do without going through the permit stage, which we're already gonna go through on the culvert. Or we can just put two cross culverts across the road and have issues again eventually. I mean, it, it... The whole Sligo... I've never seen culverts put in the way they...
So, they don't have driveway culverts? They have...
Anytime they came to a driveway, they crossed the road. Even if you start at Route 4 and start towards the farm, you come down that hill, you gotta drain, you got ditches on each side of the road. They come down, when it comes to a driveway, crossing the road. Comes to another driveway, goes back, cross the other side.
Oh, my God.
So, you put in, you know, instead of going to a driveway... Put a driveway culvert in at these places, they're going around.
They went across the road.
So, you have, you know, you get culverts going in all different directions, but you... You have it, if they're gonna cross the road, you want it to be going to where the outfall is gonna be and not coming back to the opposite side.
Right. Okay. So, let me just... Okay. Let me figure out how I wanna ask this question.
Miles, my...
Well, Miles, feel free to jump in if you want to, but so, um, into these clearly. The, 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 the way it should have been done is...
My thoughts would be, and I talked to Aaron...
There should be driveway culverts at all of these houses. Not, not...
You could be crossing the road.
Cross culverts across the road.
I mean, you do need cross culverts in just locations.
I get that, but not at every single driveway.
No, I mean, it, I mean, it seems like it's just a...
Okay.
You know, I...
We're paving this road soon. As soon as all the prep work gets done, right?
Correct.
Which includes these cross culverts. So, how much does it cost to put in a cross culvert? Take it, dig it up and put it, put in a new one?
The cross culverts, we're doing them for less than $500 apiece. We're doing them ourselves.
Right. So, but how many of those do we have, George?
We've done three, we got one more big one, then they get these other two that we just found.
But the other ones you did, were they necessary ones or were they...
Every one of them necessary, 'cause they're not... They're not low enough and they rotted.
But I guess what I'm saying, with... If you, if you had your, your druthers, would you rather see a driveway culvert than the ones you just replaced? Or was that, that doesn't matter?
It didn't interfere with... The ones we did had nothing to do with driveways.
So, the new ones you've discovered, it's gonna be another $500 apiece, probably?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. And how much would it be to put in a driveway culvert?
Driveway culvert is gonna be a piece of less than $200, a true piece of pipe.
And is that the right way to do it?
My, according to Aaron, they said the less stuff that goes across the road, the better. My thoughts on that.
And once we put in, if we... Well, let me just, let's see, distinct through this. If we put it in, it's now the responsibility of the resident.
To maintain it.
To maintain it, so they can access their, their, um, their driveway. All right, well, how many are we talking about? Two?
We're just talking about one. There's only one driveway we gotta cross. Because they put a culvert in before the... There's no other driveway there.
Okay.
They put the...
I'm not following that clearly.
The second pipe is from the catch basin going, like from the catch basin...
Right.
After the second house going across the street.
Instead of, you know, to that, that was supposedly catching the water so it wouldn't flood the house that's right there at the bridge.
Uh-huh, well, we don't wanna do that to someone.
But there is, there's plenty of water because it hasn't been working properly. The water gets past the catch basin, so we have to build it up a little bit and...
Gotcha.
And then continue it in the right direction.
Okay, well, we should probably do that, then.
Which will go across the edge of the road. It's not gonna, it's gonna be on our right away, not on the driveway.
Clearly, we don't have time to call the residents and say, look, you gotta put a a driveway culvert in. I mean, clearly, that's what we should be doing, but if you only have a couple weeks.
I...
But isn't this gonna... We're only talking up till, up to Woods Run, right? From Bear to Woods...
That's next week's big culvert. That culvert...
No, no, but the road from here to there, that's the road which...
To Pinch Hill.
To Pinch Hill, I'm sorry, to Pinch Hill.
Pinch Hill.
But you potentially could have some...
When you go...
Down the other end.
The other end is gonna be several.
Okay, so whatever decision we make today is gonna affect the decision that it...
I understand that.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that once we start...
I understand that. And, and, you know, I mean, I could take you down and show you the, this situation that we have even at the beginning of that road. I mean, the water's coming down the road, it runs in the road, the road's being eaten up because the water is not going, you know? It keeps crossing and...
I'm not really interested in fixing a bad solution, so... Know what I mean? I mean, that's just me, I mean, if it...
We just need to do it right.
Well, exactly. So, we need to try to do it right. One of them is, you're right.
Yeah, we just need to do it right, but we also need to know the next section is gonna be the same.
Right, right.
It's gonna have some major issues and it's, and it's probably one... I know how many homeowners there is there, but I know one of them owns several homes.
All right.
Yeah.
Well...
And it was never pushed on people, and whether that was the reason, I have no reason to... I mean, I've never seen, you know...
And in this structure that you...
Streets without cross culvert, I mean, without driveway culvert.
Right, and so this... This is one of the older roads in town.
Mm-hmm.
And the oldest in town, so...
I understand.
I mean, I could add to it, I don't know. I wasn't there when they, when they made those.
You know, I, I just haven't seen anything like that.
Yeah.
You know, when you grab culvert, you're running them down the side of the road and not making them...
So, the catch basin down by the, the big culvert of the red house, that's not a new one?
Well, the basin itself doesn't look too old, but it, I don't think it's where they last 10 to 12 years, you know? Somebody's put that across.
So, it's, it's long, so it wasn't...
The basin itself is not in bad shape. It's gonna be raised a little bit, and then if we decide to go across that side of the road, I can turn that and use the same basin. Just drive the, you know, around the pipes down the street. It's... You know, I mean, I've, I've seen basin, you know, if there was reasons for this, I don't know what they are.
Right.
And I told, you know, I said something to Aaron about it. I says, why would they be crossing the road? He said, well, to avoid driveway, if that's the case.
Right.
And, but, you know, unless there's a ledge or something there that would...
I mean, it doesn't look like it was put in when we did the last round of, of work on...
No.
It's, it's...
No, that's not that new.
Okay. That's good to know.
No, no, because the riprap is actually buried near the pipe. So...
So, we, clearly, we didn't do it, but we wouldn't have buried the pipe we put in. Okay. I hope. All right. Interesting.
You know, it's just, it, it's, it's gotta be...
I would like to meet the person that put this, this in and then decided to... Instead of just rooting it to where it should go, decide to go back across the road and dig that back and forth.
It just, this don't make sense, it just, you know... Right from the get-go, when I started looking at the road and seeing why it's deteriorating and seeing all the cross culverts, when you get to a driveway, there's no culvert.
Right.
Or it's a buried culvert.
All right.
But, uh...
So, we're talking about one driveway culvert at this point, then? So, we're talking potentially 10, 12, who knows how many?
I don't, I don't actually have a count on the, the other section of road, but it's something that's gonna have to be looked at when you, when you decide to do that section of road.
Right. Well, clearly, we don't wanna... I can't imagine we wanna have to maintain this undergrowth culvert that really is not a responsibility we shouldn't be doing. We shouldn't have done it in the first place, but...
I mean, 'cause they're all metal, they all rot. And no one's a plastic, so lifespan is...
Right, still, it's gonna fall on the town eventually to replace that as well, so and it's not the town's responsibility.
It's gotta be maintained, that's the key.
Okay. So...
I mean, the dishes have to be maintained. You can't have the dishes grow up and then fill with gravel and fill in the pipes. Then you're in the same boat with this plastic and steel.
So, we need to reach out then to the property owner. I don't even, I don't know whose house it is, so I don't know, but, um... I'm gonna start, need to start reaching out to, um, the other end of the road and everything to let them know that they're gonna need to, fair warning, you need to, um... Need to replace your, need to put in driveway culverts. 'Cause the town's not gonna replace cross road culverts that isn't its responsibility. Everyone else in town has to maintain a driveway culvert. I don't know why.
Do they have them? Are they putting them in?
Well, that's another thing.
You know, that's, that's another thing.
Right.
There's some places you don't need them, there's places you do.
You do need them, yeah.
Okay, so we've got maybe two weeks max before paving starts, would you say?
Well, the weather, the weather doesn't cooperate. I don't know much longer it's gonna be.
So, two to three weeks maybe before paving starts? Are we going to reach out to all the property owners and say, you're buying a culvert now?
Well, I think we really have to do the one, but then...
We don't have anything in our paving section that needs it, other than this one.
So, you share all the other driveways on the road further down?
Yeah, won't affect our roads.
Won't affect paving. It's gonna affect at the next time around.
Next section of road.
Which is the road.
Next section of road is the one they want, they wanna be start thinking about in the future here.
Okay, so one conversation might handle more than one driveway, then?
Correct.
That's another thing, is that, you know, there's warning now this year for the same property owner potentially, um, if there are other driveways by the same owner for next year.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the only driveway that's impacted by this? So, it's just the one property owner?
Yeah, it was only the second one.
There's only like two or three property owners on that road, right? And, and...
Um, there at least a half a dozen.
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
It's okay, it's six, but there's at least a dozen driveways we're talking about.
Okay, but this is the only driveway?
'Cause they have multiple.
They own multiple properties, is my point.
Well, right. Right.
More individuals, right?
Right, further down on the other side of Pinch Hill, but for the section that we're doing, this is the only driveway that needs a culvert?
Correct, we got the other driveway, they park across the street from the red house. They don't park, there's no driveway there per se.
Okay.
So, house above it, that little house.
That little tiny house front, which is up the over there? Okay.
So, you all are agreeing to have it installed and then tell them that it is their responsibility to maintain it?
I mean, I don't know if we're gonna have time to tell someone they've got a...
I, I, I understand, I just wanna make sure we're...
A culvert, I mean...
I agree.
So, so we're saying we're gonna install, and we're paying for it and installing it, but they have to maintain it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the maintenance is basically, they're gonna make sure it stays clean. They can't be dumping stuff in the ditch and stuff like that, so...
But is that what, what's gonna happen on the, above that road as well? With more notice?
I think we need to reach out now to the rest of the road, telling them that they're on notice for next year, that...
Whenever they decide to do that section of road, which is not gonna be...
Well, whenever soon, within the next few years, that they need to do that. So, maybe you can identify, um, what those houses are, so that we can notify them.
I can almost bet that there's probably one or two culverts on those road, that road, and that's it.
Yeah, but we wanna make sure that we're sending letters to the right people that really need driveway culverts. But we can take care of this one. We'll install it, they'll maintain it.
Oh, if it's $200 versus $500, that would be on look for. Needs to get done.
Okay.
Or the road's gonna get damaged long term.
Yes.
If it's not done, right?
That's, I mean, the water doesn't go down the ditch, it's going down the road, and that's what's causing 90% of these problems. I mean, you can see, if any time it rains, you just drive down Sligo, or you're plenty to see.
Miles, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
No, I, I don't. Um, I, I agree that it, it makes more sense to spend less money to do the project right, if, if that means, you know, we, we put in a driveway culvert, culvert and then turn it over to the owner. I think that makes more sense.
Yeah. Does it make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so let's take that, well, let's do, uh, we need to vote on this, so motion to, um, to, to put in the driveway culvert?
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a street number or anything, right?
They don't have to. They don't go with... All right, you, you know, can do it this week, aren't you?
No, that one there, we could actually... I gotta find out when they're coming, but we can't wait too long because I, well, I don't know if they're gonna allow us not to cross the road. I kept waiting from Aaron to see if we can get us some quick answer on it, 'cause we can run this down the side of the road even after it's paved. If they're using the old culverts, cross the road, and we're either taking them out or...
I got you.
We're in a situation right there.
Can't we make a motion to go forward and then add the, the street number of the house after the fact? We'll just say that we'll add the street number?
I can, I can add the street number.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we, um, install the driveway culvert on Sligo Road, that is interfering with our paving project at this time.
To offset the crossroad culvert?
Yeah, to offset the crossroad.
Is it limited to cross or...
I'll second that.
Less chance of cross and everything, so...
Okay. Any other discussion? All of those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Or opposed?
Aye.
So, that's it. We should get your, the direction we want you to go on, George. All right, so, do he ask permit for Sligo Road culvert? You kinda touched on it a little bit.
We, we're waiting for Aaron to see if he's gonna be going to the...
But this, this mystery culvert that was put in whenever it was years ago is...
Well, to change the direction of the flow of water, allowing us to go in the outflow side. That's why I'd prefer to put the catch basin at the bridge at the culvert, right before the culvert, to catch the sediment before it goes in the water.
Right.
So...
But that's what's holding us up right now, is getting the answer from Aaron.
See if we can get an answer earlier on if we can do that.
All right, so we'll hold off on that.
I'm waiting for a task order from Hoyleton there.
Right, okay.
But our general services agreement is, um, not due to expire soon.
Oh, good, okay.
So, that's already in place.
That's good to know. Okay. Bicentennial park flag poles.
They're down?
Yes, I saw that.
So, now we have to do, when you decide what we're gonna do, we can...
So, the, uh, the historical committee met last, I don't know, Thursday or Fri... I don't know, Wednesday or Friday, Thursday, I haven't remembered what day last week. And, um, there was, um, some agreement. It wasn't an official vote, 'cause we, we just met down there. Come back up here. But there was interest in, um, offsetting the cost to repair the flag poles and to put light on them, if they were to be up by the, um...
By the...
Gazebo, which seems to make more sense anyways. Being maintained and actually watched there. Is it possible, George, to, um, that boulder that the, uh, the marker's on? The bicentennial markers?
That up there.
Can we move that up there, too?
Yeah, it's just a rock.
Yeah, it's not, okay. So, maybe after next month's meeting of the historical committee, we can... I mean, this is not appropriate, that's, that, by the way, but we've taken care of the hat.
We've taken the plaques off?
Oh, good, okay.
The other two flags, so whether...
So, we can weld them on, the new ones, or something, or whatever.
Screw them on, everything, so...
Okay, well, thank you for that. I don't want anyone getting hurt.
If we go to the same room, if we decide what, decide whatever, where they wanna do a flag pole, so...
They're also looking at, um, fixing this gazebo and, um, looking to see how much it would cost to replace a couple of the granite columns that got knocked down and changed, see how much that would cost, too, so...
They're gonna, they're looking into that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. See how much it would cost, if it's gonna be feasible to do this year or not, so... We'll keep you all posted.
Did you check and see if the electricity is working on that gazebo?
Thank you, you, it's like you read my mind, you came to the meeting. So, thank you for jogging my memory. So, George, there's a circuit break in there. It's in a bush. Right, of course it is, right? So...
Yes, there is one.
It's behind, do you know where it is?
Yeah.
So, we've got a lock on it. We don't know where, the key's either in the highway garage or it's up here.
Well, we have, we have a mast...
Or a mast, yeah, no. So, if you wanna bring the bolt cutters over and take that off, that might be helpful. It could be a... Or a mast, yeah, no, so if you want to bring the bolt cutters over and take that off, that might be helpful. It could be a.
I said we're doing our negotiations with two-way. We've been able to include a few other items within that number that we needed and they're willing to make it all incorporate within those numbers on what we want, so.
So approximately how much is each portable?
Just under six grand.
Okay.
We've been negotiating with them.
No, I just want to make sure.
Balling back and forth and.
Going forward you'll have an idea about what it.
Yep.
That you probably wouldn't get that price unless you did something big like this.
Correct.
Yeah.
So. If I want to go in by one or two, you know, I'm not going to.
You're not going to get it.
Excuse me, this cover.
You're right.
So this purchase order will cover all of this, everything that we discussed in warrant article number 12 of the delivery session then?
Yes, correct.
And the little more.
Portables in your base station. Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Will these work with what you have because clearly 13 is less than what you have for staff?
Right.
So is this going to work with your people's ones that they have?
Yep, with the equivalent that.
You're going to get rid of the worst ones and replace it with this?
Right, as they fail, they'll go away.
Okay.
The goal is as we get the new ones and I kind of brought this up in the past, they're going to be on the first two apparatus. Basically when these are all in service and everybody's trained, those will be on the first two pieces so that the initial guys responding will all have the new equipment. The other stuff will go to, you know, there's utility or the tank truck which is not used quite as often but they'll still have the straight. They can still talk to each other, this communication is still good, but these ones are obviously huge upgrade and the power's better so we'll be able to talk further and better.
Infillings and stuff like that.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, okay. Miles, any questions?
Nope, I think I'm good.
All right. Are you sure you're good?
Yeah.
All right, so purchase order 1613, so moved in second. Did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Really appreciate all your due diligence.
Thank you. We're trying to squeeze every last drop.
All right. I don't think we had, is that all we had for us, Mark?
I think I want to have a small discussion in non-public.
Okay, before we do that.
Yeah, I have something for us too. Okay, we had talked about RUC and having CPR training.
Yep.
And they were looking for Saturday, June 1st. Do you think that would be possible?
I'll go back and look if I can find somebody.
Okay.
Now, they want an instructor and they want a place to hold the train.
Oh, they're looking for the instructor.
They're looking for.
I would assume they wouldn't have it at your fire station, yeah.
June 1st.
June 1st, Saturday, June 1st. Yeah, they were looking for CPR training and maybe basic first aid. I mean, I'm not sure you have to go elaborate, but.
Do we have any, now, any idea of numbers?
It would be the, it would be the director, assistant director, counselors.
So this is like whether you school that group of those people?
Yeah, yeah.
Those people?
Yeah, I think it's the most, yeah, because they're basing it on the number of kids, the counselors. Actually, the one I talked to tonight said he's CPS certified, so if he gets hired, it doesn't mean he can't go in.
But if you have capacity, maybe we could open it up to the town employees who have expired.
Do it at the same time?
Yeah, if that's workable.
Yeah.
So they're looking at June 1st. If June 1st isn't good, I'm sure the week after might be okay too. They don't start till the end of year.
End of school and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I would say you can have that fire station.
Sure.
It would be easier if things there and they can come to you.
Yeah.
But let me know if the date is good in approximate time and then I'll, if I didn't have a date, let me know.
Okay, I will get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
I'll go find out what I can.
Okay.
See who's there.
We've kept fire ponds on there as a placeholder. I know we're going to talk about CIP in a bit, but we're going to start talking budget probably in July, so another.
Yep, I am aware.
We want to, we don't want to lose sight of any repairs we need to make.
Okay, got it.
So, so you want your non-public personnel?
Yeah, I guess we can call it personnel, it's concerning the ambulance.
Okay.
It's better if we had a small discussion first.
I'll make a motion going non-public.
I'm just trying to think if we do it that way or a reputational issue, I think it's probably better that way because we're talking about someone's reputation perhaps, so we'll do it that way. I just want to make sure we're not, we're compliant with the rights and law, so. All right, it's been moved in second, I'll second it. May I do a roll call? Denise?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Mike, yes, okay, so we're a non-public session to deal with an issue that has to do with someone's reputation. I guess you will do for a moment, I'm not sure all the cameras are off.
All right, well, very quick then. All right, purchase order.
So that's, that's, it's been done, but it's not been signed, so the sign, yeah.
Oh, is that the sign of it?
Oh, this one was signed.
So the P O has been signed, but the paper that it goes with needs to be signed.
This was last week.
Yes.
Oh, this is for the pass, the purchase passes for the record. I did it previously, how about?
That's for the trip.
Oh, that's for the police station.
Yeah.
Yeah, am I to do it? Am I to do it now?
It's a purchase order, right?
Yeah.
To pay for, yeah, I got to move it.
You do it now?
Okay, I move that we approve purchase order 1679 for Townsend Energy to repair a relief valve for the heating system for $574.61.
I'll second it, so.
The chief talked to us about, was it last week or the week before?
He had provided the picture of the little.
Yeah, we didn't have a dollar amount back then.
Down there.
Water down.
You might not have been actually.
Yeah, but anyways, the valve and they had water coming out and.
You went to, you went away on business.
I don't remember.
It's that Monday that you were gone on.
Okay, I don't remember where I went, but it wasn't anywhere fun obviously. Okay, so you guys already talked about this?
Yeah.
Okay, so purchase order 1679, the movement is seconded, it's been fixed, so that's a good thing. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
I wonder why I felt like I was crazy, I had no idea how we had talked about this. We didn't, you did, okay. All right, we have the 2019 police employee pay rates.
So.
As agreed to last week?
Yes, you'll notice that not everybody's listed because not everybody's getting a raise right now, so that's only what's going on right now.
All right, all right, as, as, as suggested by the chief, the schedule.
Right, and you see that he signed it, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. We have already agreed to it, so.
Check them.
And by all means, if you want to look at it.
All right. Okey-dokey, next thing we have is a Hawkers and Pedlers permit, number 19-001. It's valid from May 14th to June 17th for door-to-door solicitations by Southwestern Advantage. I don't know if the company got.
Educational materials.
Okay. Like encyclopedias, I think?
No, I think it's more like, it's for children, like small through high school, but it's for.
How much does that cost me?
I don't.
I won't be wrong, all right. Okay, there's no objection to the chief, this is from us, so. Any objection to us issuing this Hawkers and Pedlers license?
They can avoid my help.
I think only if you have small children at the house do you have to worry about it, so. Your dogs will, unless they want to get whatever it is, you'll be safe. School. You and I may be in trouble, but.
They don't live there anymore.
Oh, you're safe now. But, but miss, ma'am, you have great children, right? Anyways, well, good luck to them, there you go. I shouldn't make fun of these, I don't even know this person, so. He's from Lincoln, Nebraska, good luck to him.
I said we're doing our negotiations with two-way. We've been able to include a few other items within that number that we needed and they're willing to make it all incorporated within those numbers on what we want, so.
So approximately how much is each portable?
Just under six karat.
Okay.
We've been negotiating with them.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure.
Balling back and forth and.
Going forward, you'll have an idea about what it.
Yep.
But you probably wouldn't get that price unless you did something big like this.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, all right.
I can, I want to go with my one or two, you know, I'm not gonna, he's not gonna get it.
Yeah, I got it.
Excuse me, this cover.
You're right.
So this purchase order will cover all of this, everything that we discussed in one article, number 12, about the delivery session then?
That's correct.
And the little modules in your, um, in your base station. Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
Will these work with what you have, because clearly 13 is less than what you have for staff.
Right.
So is this gonna work with your people's ones that they have?
Yep, with the equivalent that, yep, with the equivalent we have now.
You're just gonna get rid of the worst ones and replace it with this?
Right, as they fail, as they fail, it'll go away.
Okay.
The goal is as we get the new ones, and I kind of brought this up in the past, they're gonna be on the first two apparatus. Basically, when these are all in service and everybody's trained, those will be on the first two pieces so that the initial guys responding will all have the new equipment. The other stuff will go to, you know, there's utility of the tank truck, which is not used quite as often, but they'll still have the straight, they can still talk to each other, this communication is still good, but these ones are obviously a huge upgrade and the power's better, so we'll be able to talk further and better and whatnot.
In buildings and stuff like that, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, okay. Miles, any questions?
Nope, I think I'm good.
All right. Are you sure you're good?
Yeah.
All right, so, purchase order 1613, so move in second, did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Really appreciate all your due diligence.
Thank you. We're trying. Squeeze every last drop.
Thank you.
All right. The only thing we had, is that, is that all we had for us, Mark?
I think I want to have a small discussion in non-public.
Okay, before we do that.
Well, yeah, I have something for us too.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, we talked about RAC and having CPR training.
Yep.
And, um, they were looking for a Saturday, June 1st, do you think that would be possible?
Look, if I can find somebody.
Okay.
Now, they want an instructor or they want a place to hold the train?
Oh, they, they're looking for the instructor.
They're looking for, and everything.
I would assume they wouldn't have it at your fire station, yeah.
June 1st.
June 1st, Saturday, June 1st. Um, uh, yeah, they were looking for CPR training and maybe basic first aid, I mean, I'm not sure you have to go elaborate, but.
Do we have any now, any idea of numbers?
It would be the, it would be the director, assistant director, counselors.
So this is like what they do at school, that group of those people?
Yep, yep.
Those people?
Yeah, I think it's the most, yeah, because they're basing it on the number of counselors. Actually, the one I talked to, Tom, is already CPS certified, so if he gets hired, I mean, but doesn't mean he can't go in.
For sure.
But if you have capacity, maybe we could open it up to the town employees who have expired.
Okay. Do it at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's workable.
Yeah.
So they're looking at June 1st, if June 1st isn't good, I'm sure the week after might be okay too, they're, they don't start till the end of June.
End of school and whatnot.
Yeah, yep, so, um, but I would say you can have that at the fire station, which would probably be easier for things there.
Yeah.
And they can come to you.
Yeah, they put those right there.
But let me know when the date is good in approximate time and then I'll find another date, let me know.
Okay, I will get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
I'll go and find out what I can, see what's there.
We've kept fire ponds on there as a placeholder. Um, I know, we're gonna talk about CIP in a bit, but, um, we're gonna start talking budget probably in July, so another, just so you know.
Yep, I am aware.
We want to, um, we don't want to lose sight of any repairs that we need to make.
Okay, got it.
So, so you want your non-public personnel?
Um, yeah, I guess we can call it personnel, it's concerning the ambulance.
Okay.
I think it's better if we had a small discussion first.
I'll make a motion going non-public.
I can second that.
I'm just trying to think if we do it that way or, a reputational issue, I think it's probably better that way, because we're talking about someone's reputation perhaps, we'll do it that way. Um, I just want to make sure we're not, we're compliant with the rights and all, so, all right, it's been moved in second, I'll second it, um, maybe a roll call, Denise?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Mike, yes, okay, so we're a non-public session to deal with an issue that has to do with a, someone's reputation. So, I guess you'll all do for a moment, make sure all the cameras are off, please. All right, well, that'd be quick then, huh? All right, purchase order to that and I'll second it.
Um, so that's, that's, it's been done, but it's not been signed, so the sign, yeah, that.
Oh, is that the sign of it?
Oh, this one was signed.
So the PO has been signed, but the paper that it goes with needs to be signed.
No, okay.
This was last week.
Yes.
Oh, this is for the past, the part past is for the rec. How about, what is that? Excited.
That's for the drip.
Oh, that's from the PlayStation.
Yeah.
You want me to do it? You want me to do it now?
It's a purchase order, right, to pay for, yeah, that's what I moved.
Yeah, do it now. Okay, I moved that we approve purchase order 1679 for Townsend Energy to repair a relief valve for the heating system for $574.61.
I'll second it, so.
The chief talked to us about, was it last week?
He had provided the picture of the little.
Yeah, we didn't have a dollar amount down there.
I had no record of that.
Water down.
Is he here together?
Um.
Is he not here?
You might not have been actually.
Yeah, but anyways, the valve and they had water coming out and.
You went to, you went away on business.
It's, it's that Monday that you were gone on.
Okay, I don't remember where I went, but it wasn't anywhere fun, was it? Okay, so, you guys already talked about this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, purchase order 1679, the movement seconded, it's been fixed, so that's a good thing. Uh, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
I wonder why, I felt like it was crazy, I had no idea if we had talked about this. We didn't, you did, okay. All right, we have the 2019 police employee pay rates, as agreed to last week?
Yes, um, you'll notice that not everybody's listed because not everybody's getting a raise right now, so that's only what's going on right now.
All right, all right, as, as, as suggested by the chief, the schedule.
Right, and you see that he signed it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we've already agreed to it, so.
Check them.
And, and by all means, if you want to look at it.
Okay.
All right. Okey-dokey, next thing we have is a hawkers and peddlers permit, uh, number 19 dash 001. It's valid from May 14th to June 17th for door-to-door solicitations by Southwestern Advantage, I don't know if that company does.
Educational materials.
Okay. Like encyclopedias, I think?
No, I think it's more like, um, it's for children, like small through high school, but it's for.
How much is that in a classroom?
I.
I won't be home, all right. Okay, there's no objection to the chief, this is from, this is from us, so, any objection to us issuing this hawkers and peddlers license?
If they can avoid my house.
I think only if you have small children at the house, you have to worry about it, so, your dogs will, unless they want to get whatever it is, you'll be safe, schooled. You and I may be in trouble, but, um.
They don't live there anymore.
Oh, you're safe now. But, but miss, ma'am, you have great children, right? Anyways, well, good luck to them, there you go. Shouldn't make fun of these, I don't even know this person, so, he's from Lincoln, Nebraska, so good luck to him. It's a big territory apparently.
Offer letter.
It's an offer letter for a counselor, for a camp counselor, uh, to a Mr. Mike Cruz, I'm gonna do all three at the same, both of them at the same time, and we also have another one to Sam Mitchell, both residents of our community that would like to be camp counselors. Are they the people from last year, are they, are they here?
No, I think they're new.
They're new? All right, and they've been.
The recommendations from the teachers.
Vetted by the rec committee, so any objection to hiring these two young men?
Yeah, I think what should we do?
Okay, I'll second it, all those in favor say aye? Aye opposed? All right, maybe we'll hire them. I'll sign it then. Set your aware.
Yeah, Cruz is that C-R-U-Z?
Correct. And then Mitchell, the two Ls.
Yeah.
And everything else is from last week? There's that. How many pages is this? I can't see. The MS 123 form for, um, that's been prepared by the town clerk of the state of New Hampshire.
213.
123.
12.
This is, um, the updated information about elected officials, all of our, our information, our phone numbers, and that's not my phone number, so, but.
It might be the town hall line, yes.
It is my phone number then, sorry, all right. I said, Denise, do we have the same phone number?
We can't.
Clearly I shouldn't be doing this, all right. Um, has this been reviewed or where, or is that what I'm supposed to be doing now?
Well, by all means, you know, you're signing it, you might look it over, but.
Well, I don't know where.
Worked on it together, it is a town clerk's document, but, um.
I know, I, okay, I do know where all these people live, so, I don't know their actual addresses, but, I don't know. Do I have to look this and see?
I don't know.
So the town clerk is certifying that this is the.
These are all the elected people and their addresses and.
Not just elected, but like plan of board members, you know?
Employees.
Yeah.
Okay, we all have to sign it, so we're all gonna add it together, so, I see that.
Does she sign it?
She already has.
She already has.
Electronically.
Is she filing it electronically?
I'll be filing it for her.
This gets uploaded.
Or it gets uploaded?
Uploaded.
Oh, okay.
It's a portal.
Does this get scanned and then uploaded?
Yes.
Super, uh, oh, Miles, you can sign it, uh, next time you're in town hall.
Okay.
Next week you can sign it.
Why is there so many spots?
Who knows?
You might have a, be like a five-member or nine-member board or something like that.
It could be a city too, you have a board of mayor and aldermen or a city council. Manchester has about 14 aldermen, so, and they have to fill it out too, so.
And if you see it, I'll figure it out.
Proceed.
Oh, go ahead, no, it's not, all right, we're, I would have came to Miles, but he's not sitting next to me, so, one purchase, one more purchase order and we're done.
And what is it for, who is it for?
It's for, um, she says it in there, she put it in the mailways.
Mailways, should be up there?
Yes.
Okay, purchase order 1718 to mailways, a 1,200 estimated bulk, pre-sort package payable to mailways for the June property tax bill mailing for $460.
Second to the postage for.
Was, for them to stuff it and post it and all of that, right? They do all the work, right?
They do do all the work, I don't know that that, I believe that's just postage though, I think you have to prepay postage and then they'll do the handling and bill you for the handling after or something like that.
And that's just its cost, total.
Um, she worked it out, this is the third time we're doing it, and she worked it out for the first time that we did it, and it wasn't that much more money, um, but it allowed her not to have to find volunteers, because she would be working extra hours and finding volunteers to stuff envelopes, so, you know, I can't comment beyond that about how much more it is, it did cost some more, but it isn't as much as you might think, because the postage itself is a big expense with tax bills.
Yeah, but it's less than, um, the postage here is less than if we had gone across the street and bought again.
Right, and that's part of why it's not as expensive as you think, because they get discounted postage, whereas.
Because they do it through, they get.
Through a machine, whereas we have to pay 50 cents a piece for something amount.
Right.
Have we looked into buying a postage machine, or renting a postage machine?
We have, um, we just, believe it or not, don't do enough volume, because although we spend a fair amount on postage, um, we, a lot of the money is for certified mail, which doesn't really work with the machines, we don't do a lot of, I mean, we do plenty of regular mail, but for the regular mail, the volume of regular mail that we do, it's not cost-effective.
But you can do the certified mail on there, you know?
I didn't know that, so that might, you know, that might change it, but for the volume of regular mail that we do.
Except for twice a year you do in tax bills.
Well, there's that, and that might, that might help.
I mean, it just.
Well, but, so for this year's budget, we've approved to go this route, so, any other discussion of purchase order 1718? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
All right. This is certainly, um, a topic that we should, it's not March, it's May, first of all.
For budget season.
For budget season. Something in that sort of order, three instead of five, I think I'm trying to get them.
There is an old email that I can forward you, um.
All that thing. So that's it?
I'll forward the email to you that, you know, calculated out what the difference was between doing it in-house and doing it not.
Is something incorrect now that I've signed it?
No, you're right.
Should I cross mine in on, if anyone?
No, we can work it out.
Okay.
Okay. My agenda. Community book, yesterday.
Silly Leopold, 426 Washington Street, I believe, I sent something to the board last week for rec, did it not come through?
Let's see, what was it?
It was a grant application for Dick's.
Do we have it? Was it something that we needed to, um.
Did you bring a print copy? I did bring a print copy, but I remember you sending an email out about asking other rec members if, if it was ready, but I don't remember a.
Yeah, they went out, went out.
Okay, I follow.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I might have got it because I'm rec, but.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing, that doesn't mean you didn't send it.
I might have distracted it and not sent it, and we hit the wrong button, um, but the rec committee would like to ask Dick's Sporting Goods for $1,000 in equipment donations, and we need to get approval from you, we are asking, um, that we be considered, um, to get equipment of soccer goals, ping pong tables, um, foosball tables and air hockey tables to, um, give the kids more activities during, um, during camp, and that we, um, would like a thousand dollars value right now to accept that.
Did we apply for this last year?
We did.
Did we get it last year or I don't remember?
We did not, um, but they require a 90-day period, which, to bring us to the end of camp, we need to get it in this week to follow within the 90 days, it's a very small writing.
Is that what you're gonna have to sign or?
No, you just need to give your approval and I can hit the submit button on the computer.
We, I'm sure we discussed this at length last year, is there anything new that may have come up?
We changed the acts this year from.
Well, Miles, you weren't privy to the conversation last year, there's nothing that, that encumbers the town, we're not on the hook for anything, it's just money that can be used for recreational equipment, right?
Right.
Any, any concerns or discussion?
No.
And how about a motion to move forward with a Dick's Sporting Goods grant opportunity?
I make a motion that we proceed with the approval of giving, um, camp, rather the approval to submit to, what is it again?
Dick's Sporting Goods.
I'll second that, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye opposed? All right, go forth and ask for the grant.
And so rec also met last Wednesday and had a very productive meeting, and we shall be bringing more things forth to this board.
Great, thank you. And the committee report? All right, so, seeing none, we are going to, so everyone knows, go into non-public session to deal with exemptions and tax for, and tax credits, and then we have a, um, a non-public session for, to deal with a personnel issue, brief personnel issue, and, um, welfare.
Yes.
We're gonna go in and out, in and out, and in and out, and then in and out of a non-public session, then we're gonna go home, so.
We do, really?
We'll let you know some, I know what time, your all-in was, wait, in Malway, but I'm hoping to go home when it's done, so, no other action that we take.
Motion out.
Oh, sorry.
I make a motion going to non-public.
For, anyone of those, say that, or one of those at least.
For, uh, which one?
Those that were.
Exemptions and credits.
All right, I'll second that, all those in fa, uh, in your roll call, Denise?
Yep.
Miles?
Yeah.
Mike? Yes, so our non-public session.